Okay. If you could take more, we would give you more. But I don't want to overload. Yeah, it'd be too much. Yeah, I know. Uh-uh. It looks like, um... It looks like this is a road got snapped. This road got snapped, too.
That was an old North Star staff.
Yeah, that was a little Neil Harman thing. That might have been BK before Keeler.
Yeah, it's Harman film ground.
Yes.
Yeah, we get a kind of a picture with film ground.
No, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll...
I do feel like a QR code round.
Oh, I asked them in the hallway. I'm not going to get it.
I got something I have to read before y'all stand up.
Oh.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Westwood Heights School Board of Education to Order. On behalf of the board, thank you for being here this evening and for your continued support of our students, staff, and schools. This is an official meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school district. It is not a community forum. However, time for public participation is provided as indicated on your agenda under public comments. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our guests that a sign-in sheet and copies of tonight's agenda are available at the back table. Is this a... Did you put it up here? It's actually the front table. For those joining us online, you may subscribe to meetings, postings, and agenda through the district website at www.hamidihawks.net. At this time, I invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could someone read the mission statement for me, please?
The district will provide a high-quality education and guidance to all students and educators with a passion to see every student succeed.
Road comments, please. Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Approval of the minute meeting agenda.
So moved.
Report. Moved by Mr. Fikes, supported by Mr. Walker. All in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, any discussions about that? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Six ayes, zero posers that motion carries. Reports. Board committee reports. Finance Committee Treasury report.
Thank you. Really? All right. Thank you for that assist, Madam President. Donations. A received from Elga Credit Union, two hundred dollars on eleven twenty-one twenty-five for PBIS kickoff at Hamidi Middle High School. Received B received from Petty Engineering Incorporated, five hundred dollars on eleven twenty-one twenty-five for robotics team sponsorship twenty-twenty-six. Donations are reflected in the full report in our board packet here. Number two is finance report bills payable. Board packet December oh-three, twenty-twenty-five accounts payable. Internal seven thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents. General fund, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, one dollar and sixty-seven cents. Athletic, eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Food service, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Building in site, zero. For a total of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Policy Committee.
Actually, we have a meeting on December the eighth coming up. But this is approval of the district course catalog. The description? The district course catalog must be approved by the Board of Education annually. Here is a link to the course catalog. There has been no changes since last year's approval. This is done as part of the pupil accounting process. And we will discuss further at the upcoming meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Culver. You're welcome. Superintendent's report.
What order? I just like to know why the actual report, building grounds site zero. Do you, do anybody know? I'm trying to be, I just wonder.
I didn't, I didn't know that it was a, uh...
We don't have any payables for...
Yeah, we don't have anything to pay or... We don't have any money in the fund there. There's no fund for it that I know of. It's just like whatever you guys decide what we'll do when we meet with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So, yeah, if we decide to buy a truck or...
There's no bills to pay.
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, you should. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Uh, we did the building.
Yeah, I'll call the building, uh, yeah, I'll call the building. Well, you did, you missed the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
No, we just did that.
You did Buildings and Grounds Committee? Okay.
Do you want to do the student represent? Do we have any?
Yeah, yeah. So can we do Buildings and Grounds? I don't think Ms. Johnson gave a report. I know Ms., uh... You did do one last week, so we don't have to do it this week? You don't want to?
No, it's not the two reports.
Yeah.
We still work in regards to the building, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll meet again. We do have, uh, Mr. Fikes did mention last week that we were supposed to get an appraisal, and we do have that now.
We got the appraisal.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And so Superintendent's report, I'll have the, uh, the building leaders come up.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Casey, you come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You should all have my report there in front of you. Hamidi High School report to the Board of Education. Just wanted to touch on some of the things that are going on in the classrooms throughout the building, getting prepared for the holidays. Uh, in the geometry class, Ms. Gerbers and Ms. Thomas decided to go with a no technology number. And I have to tell you, it was one of the best observations I've done in the classroom in a long time. I couldn't figure it out until after the fact when we talked, that that was the difference that I was seeing. The students were talking, laughing, having fun, engaging, and there were no phones or computers anywhere in sight. And it was actually a really cool thing to see. So I was, I was happy to see how that worked out for them. Uh, they worked exclusively on paper and pencil to strengthen core skills, and they did some kinesthetic learning with music and movement to drive those ideas home. And the main ideas were lines and angle relationships. Uh, just skipping down a little bit, Algebra One, Ms. McGee's class in preparation for the holiday, they're going to be reinforcing some math concepts with festive activities, Christmas math-themed bingo, and graphing and coloring exercises to create Christmas trees. In the art classes, Mr. Bucheister has the students exploring media differentiation. They're going to work on five tree shapes assignment, where they draw an abstract tree shape and color each section using a different medium, like paint, pastels, crayons, et cetera. So they're learning about the different artistic effects. Uh, in our special education class, Mrs. Kaiser is doing resource and life skill classes. They're doing Holidays Around the World Project. They're researching global celebrations, completing associated crafts, and they're going to be displaying that work in the common area for everybody to enjoy. Uh, ELA ten, Ms. Dykos' class is doing a winter tradition research project. The research and present to the class on a specific winter tradition from around the world that was selected randomly from a bucket. Uh, they'll be rewriting a Christmas carol, so they're going to select one that they are familiar with, rewrite the lyrics, and perform that in front of the class to encourage creativity in public speaking. The psychology class is creating a hero or villain using abnormal psychology. So they're taking the concepts that they're learning about, some of the psychology disorders, and applying it to something that a lot of them are interested in, which is, uh, the comics and villains. So they're taking those concepts and trying to spin it in a fun way. And another special education event, Mrs. Kaiser and Ms. Wagner did a Friendsgiving celebration a few weeks ago, leading up to Thanksgiving, allowed the students and staff a moment to disconnect from technology, share what they were thankful for, and connect meaningfully. And finally, in Ms. Zell's class, they're going to do an ugly sweater competition on paper. So they're going to design an ugly sweater of their own to be displayed in the hallway, and they're going to receive an award for any winners. So that's basically what I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
What are your academic goals for your, for your school?
So, uh, we'll be moving toward very specific goals in reading and math, and we're going to have...
So you're going to improve the reading and math?
Those are areas of biggest concern, and we'll be implementing some building-wide strategies similar to what we put in place at Academy West over the past few years, things that I have seen work. And, uh, hopefully those will help us meet the goals that we're approaching.
Okay, what type of goals do you have for reading and math?
Well, we are looking to improve our proficiency and growth significantly each year. So we don't have a specific number yet because we don't have the goals as far as percentages. But we will be looking to increase our growth and proficiency by at least five to ten percent each year going forward.
Okay, so you will have that available for us by next month?
Sure.
You think?
Yep.
So the, so their, so their goal should be, because we have a district goal that we're going to try to meet with our county goal. So our county goal, all, all districts in the county want to beat or match the state goal, and so there's no specific number. We do have building goals, but, or the district, every building should be working towards...
So what are your district goals?
So overall district goals.
And that's...
The state, so that's what we're looking to do. Whatever the state can do, whatever the kid...
When do they come out with that?
They're going, they're going to come out and testify on a test in the city sometime.
What, what month is that? In the spring, that'd be too late because school is all, already halfway over.
Yeah, I get that, but that's what we're working towards. So we're doing what we're doing to do. We're, we're just there to try to meet the building goals, but I also need to...
So what is the goal of the district within the county?
Once again, they want us to match the state, whatever the state is.
Well, where is the state?
There is no number of the state.
I, I would just like to see, uh, something concrete, something that says, this is where we are, this is what our goal is, that we're going to increase by five percent. I want numbers. You know, this is where we are number-wise. This is how much we're going to try, th- this is what we're going to try to reach, and these are our plans to get there. That's what I would like to see. I didn't see that, uh, but from one person last, last time we met, and I, I would just want to make sure that we all stay on the same page. And I talked to Mr. Key about that, and, but everything else is great, absolutely great, but I don't want us to forget academics, what our goals are, how we're going to reach those goals, and what success looks like.
Yeah. Our goals at the high school will be directly aligned with what the state of Michigan expects us to perform. So I believe this year's math target is about thirty-eight percent.
Okay.
And the English target is around fifty-five percent. Those are just figures I'm pulling from...
Those are targets that you want to get to?
For the school index report, yes.
Okay, thirty-eight percent for...
For math.
For math, and...
And I believe it was fifty-five for English. It's between fifty-five and sixty-five.
Fifty-five for English, and you expect to raise those by, what, five percent, ten percent?
I think that would be a manageable and reasonable goal.
Right.
Um, it would be very difficult to meet the state target this year, based on what I know now.
Because, I mean, by the time we get the results, half of the year is over, and you've lost your opportunity.
But that is our goal. We, we definitely, that's, that's an overarching goal, but year by year, we would hope to grow by, you know, somewhere between five and ten percent.
Right. Okay. And what are you going to do to, to get you there?
Those are those building-wide strategies that are explicit vocabulary instruction, daily reading and writing. Math strategies that we've already implemented. So, and those are all evidence-based strategies for what works clear in the house. Those are provided by the Federal Department of Education and the state.
Okay. Just want us to...
Absolutely.
Be there.
Yep.
I appreciate you, and I did a beautiful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. That, they will do in the classroom. So those would be approved by the teacher. They're, they, right in the plans, it says they have to be school-appropriate. So they're going to take, like, Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer and switch the lyrics up, try to keep the same rhyme and meter, and then... Absolutely. I, I could request that.
Yeah. That, that, that note might not happen.
Do you have a favorite Christmas carol that you want me to use?
No, no, I'm looking for them to decide that's what works for them. Because if you try to, you know, take what they should do, it might not be in their best interest for what they want to do.
Right. Okay.
Ms. Johnson, you had a question?
I just had a statement because, uh, so in regards to, I'm not really sophisticated. I'm trying to learn all this. But I know, uh, Mr. Key said we wait on, uh, state testing. I mean, just the idea, you know, we know what we did last year, and maybe as teachers and instructors, we can implement our own goal instead of just waiting on maybe springtime for the state test or what they want. We know what our kids did last year. We have those numbers. Maybe teachers in, you know, in parent posts could implement, like, hey, this is what we go do as a district.
Right.
Yeah, we do NWA. Ms., Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Richards, am I correct with that? Would make sure that, that I'm giving them the correct information.
A little bit. We, it's always in the mic, if you remember, the first one for this plan?
Yeah.
We don't have it in front of us right now.
Right.
There's a trajectory from two thousand twenty-two until twenty-seven.
Right.
We're off a little bit. Of course, the pandemic, uh, blaming anything but pandemic, this did set us back a little bit. But we can bring that mic.
Yeah, that would be great. Maybe, maybe you could, uh, work with other staff members to get them a door report. Is that... You work as a team? That was like a few years ago. Yeah.
Bless you.
So that's when we sit down and we really dive into the data.
Okay. Okay.
And we're restructuring things as a, as a team, right? So we're restructuring the middle school and high school, and so we're trying to get those things caught back up, and we're trying to stay on course. Like, you know, like I said before, we're a little bit behind. So we're working on it along, once again, with my vision as a, as the district goal, because I'm talking about clarity, right?
Right.
Civility, all those things, trying to get kids to come to school.
Right.
And I believe if we can get everybody to come to work and come to school, then we can have some, uh, some, some, some outcomes when it comes to education, because every kid wants to come to school. We want kids to want to come, so...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate... Yo, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for being so detailed, with the teachers' names and the description of what everybody is doing.
I, I was really impressed with things going on in the classroom, so I wanted to make sure that you guys could see that shine through here. So, and in terms of goals, the, every teacher at the high school and probably at the other buildings also, on their evaluation, they have to have a goal that mirrors what our district goal is.
Right.
So everyone is, is working toward the same end game.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies, ladies, who's up next?
Since we're going in reverse order, I guess I'm next. Um, hey, everybody. Good evening.
Hey, how are you?
You guys have my report, um, in front of you. We'll start with teaching and learning. Um, it continues to be in middle school's priority. Um, we're revamping, I've lost a teacher, and so I am revamping our math, um, intervention class. And I have our parapro, that was the math parapro, in there now, and so she's taken on some things, and, um, Ms. Dawson is helping her to, to supplement what Ms. Dawson is teaching in seventh, eighth grade, um, math class. Um, I've started evaluations and observations, and I'm amazed. I'm absolutely amazed. I'm loving the things I'm seeing in the classrooms. Um, I did Ms. Dawson's classroom, and I think I told you about it, where the kids got up and taught, um, the lesson. She had groups, and they got up, and they, they were doing, um, scientific notation. And so they gave you a definition, they explained, they each had a problem, each group had a different problem. They taught, and I guess they've been watching their teacher a lot, because they taught it like Ms. Dawson would. been watching their teacher a lot, because they taught it like Ms. Dawson would teach. And I think it was, to me, it was impactful, because when peers teach each other, I think the kids learn a little better, you know, they receive the information differently, so that was good. I was in Ms., um, Bender's classroom the other day, and they're doing the geological timeline of the earth, so it had me intrigued, um, so they, they started, it's a whole project, and so they were on the floor, they were doing timelines, they were drawing, there's like little portions of the timeline, large portions, so they really were getting into it. I'm not a science person, but it seemed interesting to me. Of course, I still have Read 180, um, and my English and, and social studies classes, um, but what I did notice and what I found, it just, it made me smile, was because I was a co-teacher for years, and to watch my co-teachers from when they first started, because I would go into the classrooms just so, you know, I could see if they were, you know, meshing and if they were doing the co-teaching model as we had shown them, there was a honeymoon period where you're not sure, you know, you don't want to step on toes and stuff, but now I go in, and they're like old married couples, they, they've got it, they're talking, they're, you know, one's starting the sentence, the other's finishing it, it looks really good, um, I was nervous about how co-teaching was gonna look when you're not used to it, but I'm gonna give Ms. Kaiser her due, they, they are killing it over on the middle school side, um, so that, that to me is amazing, because, you know, we've moved our special ed kids into general ed classrooms more so than the resource rooms, and so it really looks good, and it, it's, it's nice to see that they're getting used to teaching with each other. Um, counseling is moving right along, um, Ms. Taylor, our social worker, she just attended the Michigan Association of School Social Workers, so we were talking today, she's got a lot of things she wants to try to implement with the kids, because, you know, yeah, academics are important, but if our children aren't here with us, we, they can't learn, so they may sit in our classrooms, but if we don't reach the whole child, they're not learning anything, they're just sitting there, and so she's got some strategies that we're gonna start to put in place with the kids, and I'm excited about that. We've got a social worker intern, and he has pulled kids, and he started smaller groups, but he's working on a girls' group for me, and so I had my, um, volunteer from the block club, she came and met with me on Tuesday, and so she's all ready, she's gonna help us get that girls' group off the ground in January. Um, athletics, our boys are moving right along, um, they struggled a couple weeks ago against international, but they've rebounded, their game was canceled on Monday, they're playing tonight at Bentley, and then me. I'm starting to experience all the good things about being a principal, um, I'm enjoying it, I'm learning my kids' names, um, their attitudes, their, their likes and dislikes, um, it's a challenge, I'm not gonna lie, it's a challenge, for sure, but I'm enjoying it. I had a conversation today with Ms. Winans, and I was telling her how I'm just not sure about some things, and asking some questions, you know, because she's been here for a while, and she, she reassured me, A, that I'm on, I'm on the right track, but that, um, if we keep moving the way we're moving with our intervention classes, she's looking at the way kids are learning to read, with, um, so kids read, right, but when you ask them questions, you don't get back the, the, the right thing, so she's teaching about settings and characters, and, you know, those little things that when you sit on the M-step and they ask you, what was the main character, and you're clueless, um, so she's showing them how to pick those things out, and so she was just reassuring me that the fact that we went with a Read 180 class is paying off for us, um, hopefully it'll pay in our scores, because I know we're not where we want to be or where we need to be, but we have a plan to get there, at least, at least we're, we're setting the, the steps in place for our kids to do better when they sit this test again. That's it for me, um, oh, no, we're gonna do the, um, the hallways over here, my kids are into Christmas and, and the holidays, so we're about to do, um, deck the halls, they're gonna participate in, we're doing a school-wide door thing, but over here, we're also gonna do the hallways and just make everything a little bit more festive, you had a question for me, I saw it.
Um, where do you expect those children to be at, at the end of the school year?
I know we're not gonna meet the, um, county goal, because we're just starting, right, um, but I want us to be better than, than I found them, when they, they took the test last year.
Absolutely.
And I think Read 180 and the math intervention class is gonna push those scores up. That was our, our goal on the middle school side, I know we wanted to go to block scheduling, and it was a bit of a-
What percentage of an increase? What percentage of an increase do you expect to be at?
I want 5, but I know my projection is probably about 3%.
3%?
Increase, yeah, um, I would love to see a 5, now, let me not say that, for math, the goal is 7% from August to January.
Right.
Um, and so I'm hoping on the NWEA scores from August to January, in at least half of our students, we see that 7% goal, that is Ms. Dawson's goal.
Okay, so you're not saying 3%, you're saying 7?
She's saying 7, and I have faith in, in, in her, that she's gonna get those students to 7%, but I'm honestly, realistically, 3 to 5% for myself, you know, for me.
What, 3 to 7%?
But she's saying 7, so-
Okay, so 3 to 7% increase?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
She's proven, she's proven, she's, she's got a proven track record, so-
And I'm pretty sure she'll accomplish, she'll help you accomplish that, um, thank you, and I can-
Okay.
Ms., Ms. Richards, how many students are in middle school class?
In a classroom?
I mean, what's your total population?
I'm at less than 120, I think I'm at 120.
So 10% will be 12 kids, 5% will be 6 kids, 3% will be 2 and 1/2 kids.
Mm-hmm, well, 2 kids.
Okay.
We can't do half a kid.
Right, so I'm, I'm just saying, I, I didn't know if that population plus your percentage is to, like, i- i- if it's doable, somebody said, yeah.
So honestly, I do think it's doable, right, because when I look at our stuff, at our data, I have kids that are partially proficient, right?
Okay.
So if I can push them to proficient, and it's a lot more kids that are partially proficient than I thought, right, and so if we can push those partially proficient to proficient, I can meet my 5, probably, but-
Are, are you going to focus on the, and I know the focus is on all the students, but would you focus on the partial proficient to a little bit more to push them over?
Those are those kids we put into, well, the lower kids, but those same bubble kids, a lot of them are in the Read 180 classes, a lot of them have the in, math intervention classes, as well as the financial literacy classes, so as long as they start to build skills, we can push them over, and now the teachers know where the, the deficits are, the skill deficits, because we took time to go through data and realize where deficits were, and so I think they're moving much more informed, it's not just, oh, they're bubble kids, we should just work with, no, you know that they have a number sense issue, right? So we can work on number sense, we can work on adding and subtraction, they know how to do the algebraic expression, they just get the answer wrong, because they don't know that 7 plus 9 is 16. And so if we work on those skills, then they can also get the answer right.
Right.
So that, that's our goal.
Okay.
Ms. Cox, do you have a question?
I just have one question about, um, Ms. Taylor says she's getting the girls together.
We're trying. So in the middle school, the girls are-
What's a nice word for it?
Chatty? Patty? A little of both? Okay, I was trying to avoid that word, but they are, right, and so, but you know what else I noticed is they don't, they don't have as much self-esteem as I think they should, right, I have beautiful young ladies, but they don't act like young ladies all the time, and so we, we want to teach those skills, so that they're not, you know, yep, there you go, yep, yep.
Yeah, I remember Stefan Stone.
Y'all remember Stefan Stones, so, things like that would help. Ms. Fox?
The P L A and the math goal was absolutely zero per se, but I know they have increased beyond that, on the academic side, uh, how strong is that compared to the growth, I know the growth has increased over the last 10 years per se, but, uh, academics, how strong is that on the, uh, okay?
Do you mean the curriculum, or do you mean what our kids are doing?
I know that you use the Read 180.
Yes.
What math curriculum are you using?
Well, I, we haven't picked a, a particular curriculum for math intervention, so I had Ms. Cox in there before, and she was using different materials that she found, um, I would love us to get a program, and when we, when we meet with the, the, um, the state next week, we'll see what they have to offer us as well.
Because they were using it at one time that I remember, uh, Math 440, 40, 40, 44.
Okay, see, I like Math 180, but not everybody likes it, as a math teacher, I liked Math 180, it's similar to the Read 180 process, um, but-
It's a little bit more easier to grasp for the kids, I think.
It is, it is. Anything else?
Yeah, thank you very much. Hello?
Hello, Ms. Johnson? I am, yeah, I provided you a folder, on one side is sort of like a review of what's happened, excuse me, in both elementaries, on the other side is a little gift of your appreciation, um, that we shared with all of our volunteers, so, not that I had leftovers and you were second thoughts, but I thought you deserved a little pick-me-up.
Thank you.
You don't have a second thought, no? Um, this first sheet, right here, just sort of goes over all of the events, uh, the elementaries, of course, have been really busy with celebrations, um, the first one, our staff has provided 20 food baskets over Thanksgiving for our families, um, not only food baskets, but like food for the week as well, so, um, it's wonderful to be part of such a generous, caring community in both elementaries. It's all written here for you, so I'm just gonna pick a couple, our partnership with U of M, my previous professor, Dr. Kinesik, she teaches EDR 200, um, on campus at Hamity L, they just completed their semester, so that was great, and we're looking forward to them in January. We have a family skate night coming up on December 12th, um, shop with a hero, of course, our friends at Station 2, um, as well as the Mount Morris Township Police Department has, um, offered to shop with a hero with 10 of our students, I know, and, um, provide food baskets for some, uh, other families. Uh, NWEA, we're gonna celebrate the holidays, and we're gonna come back strong, and that's when we will, we'll do that assessment in January, so those, uh, mid-year scores will be ready for you, probably early February. One of the things that I'm really gonna focus on in January, we've had some issues, even though the elementary, uh, we don't allow cell phones, we've noticed a lot of the social media, um, conversations are coming into the building and causing disruption, so I want to do a family night, um, to support families on how to monitor, um, those types of things and help us out, so that's up and coming. This second sheet that I provided is our new dyslexia law, right, mandated by the state of Michigan. Ms. Johnson, you're shaking your head like you've heard about it. Um, it comes with three pieces, and the timeline for that is gonna be 2027, 28, is when we're gonna be in full implementation. A couple of the things is, um, uh, providing interventions in screeners for students K through 3, the third part is teacher training and professional development, um, and these programs are, it's a letters training, and on the back, it talks, on the, that second page, it talks about the science of reading in the different, um, categories that we're focusing on, so, um, I want to bring attention to that, because I'm really proud that all of our teachers in the elementary, with the exception of one 6th grade teacher, um, has signed up for this course, and it's, it's pretty intense, and it's a two-year commitment on teachers with their own time, not during the school day, it's not a PD that you leave school, you get a sub, it's after school and on the weekends, so, um, I think that speaks volumes to the staff at the elementary, and- Is it offered to who? Yes, yep, there are some pockets of the middle, high specially special ed, and actually, uh, myself and Ms. Kila will be starting the administrator piece in June, so, um, we're excited to learn, it's a whole, it's a whole different way of looking at instruction with reading, so we're excited for that.
So right now it's not mandatory, is volunteer-
Not until 2027, 28, yep, we're just getting ready.
So dyslexia, is that just a bunch of accommodations, or, no?
Yeah.
It will be.
Yeah, it's really hard to identify, yeah, yeah, it's really hard to identify, but the science and the research over time has, um, looked at some of the, uh, strategies that they use to help support students with this, and how they're really effective just as a tier one for reading, so, that's where we're going. You're correct, but I'm, I don't know if that's updated, I mean, there are screeners now, maybe some, uh, some pieces, but I, I don't think that they can actually give that a label, am I misspeaking?
Now, in special education, there is a dyslexia, there is-
Okay, all right.
So is dyslexia, is that, is that kind of akin to autism in some kind of way, or is it not at all?
No.
No.
No, it's all the neuroscience and how, how you process letters, and how you put those phonemes together to make sounds, and, um, I think one of the more popular explanations is like the letters look backwards, so, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Tell me about Mason's Day Parade.
Oh, that was new this year, so, um, that was our first one, um, it was great success, Kila was there, so as you know, we work with excellence, we have a partnership with the Mott Foundation, our change initiative this year has changed to math, so at the elementary K1 level, they're working on patterns, so each balloon, the students had their own pattern, and so it was just a wonderful, um, activity, I didn't really, we invited families, and it was during the school day, and I was really pleasantly surprised with-
That's kind of cool.
It was, it was fun, we had, we had dessert, and it was, it was a nice little activity to send them on their way for Thanksgiving. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richards.
Thank you, thank you for the time.
Ms. Rowe?
And happy holidays to you all, too.
Happy holidays to you all, so. Yeah. He has goodies, he has goodies.
Good evening. Oh, what's in here, I'll just say that right now, so, I heard disappointment over there. All right, well, I'd like to, um, highlight a couple of things that our English department's working on, um, so the English 9 students, of course, are working on vocabulary, critical thinking, and right now they're in the middle of doing a gratitude unit, and they're looking at Alex Haley's essay, "Thank You," that was a, a big part of what they're working on, um, the English- Um, the English ten has in the middle of doing a Macbeth unit. We're talking about the Macbeth. And they're taking information and character development. They're actually, she said, the next step is they're going to, um, be putting all the information on a big graphic, which is a couple, it'll be several feet tall of, uh, characters. The outline of the characters and showing the different parts of how they, uh, the character traits on there. The kids seem to like that. They did it last year too and they did some really nice, nice characters. Uh, I will say then on the high school side, of course, we've had donations of hats and gloves. This is just an aside from the English, um, because you can see outside and if you've been up there, you know the cold is here. It's not, uh, spring anymore or summer. We're getting into the winter, so we've had some students actually asking for hats and gloves already. It's been nice to be able to, uh, hand out some hats and gloves, help keep them warm as they come to school. Some of our students, um, at the Academy West are riding buses quite a long time in the morning waiting outside, so it's, it's nice to have that for them. Um, on the adult ed side, uh, they do pre and post tests and they come in and they've actually shown very good improvements already. Uh, the average gain in the, in the reading side is two grade levels already for the adult ed. So that's been pretty nice.
And they did that since the beginning of the school?
Beginning of this school year, yes.
Oh, wow, that's great, yeah.
The ones that have pre and post tested already, yep. Yep. Uh, the adult students also complete an E D P, just like the high school students. And part of that is, uh, writing a resume, doing a cover letter. Yep, and doing a research project, uh, paper on some career that they might be interested in or came up as a match for them. Again, just because they're a little older, they still need to be able to communicate, read and write. And it's nice to have them, you know, improve those skills. And I will say that Monday, coming back from Thanksgiving, they did an, after Thanksgiving luncheon down there. I did not get to eat with them, but man, they had a nice spread. It was like a whole buffet set up down there in the adult ed wing. Uh, had some really nice stuff there. Uh, I would also like to show you what's in the box here. If you remember last month, I handed out, um, a bag of chips and, uh, I think it was a water bottle with a label on it from one of the adult ed students. She does printing herself, uh, she's starting a startup business. And Mr. Fikes, right off the bat, he said, "Man, I'd like to have this." So, she heard about it and she said, "You know what, I'm gonna do some gifts there." So through the adult ed, the lady that does the screen printing, and her business card is on here too, so you kinda know who she is, but she kinda donated some stuff to the board and administrators, so you can kinda see some of the options. I mean, I talked to her today, fantastic gal, and she can do all kinds of things. Clothing, some of these things, other things, so kinda neat. I'll pass these off real quick. Oh, you already got an offer. There's a couple of different things in here.
Thank you.
The adult ed, they like to dress everything else, so put in a nice bag for us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm like a little kid, I wanna open it now.
Oh, I'm opening it. I wanna see.
Actually, it's a mouse pad with the, uh, Hamley Hawks logo on there. And, um, an administrator bag. I don't know if you, can one of you pull it out real quick? There's a mug inside here and it looks like a mug. But when you put... It's a color-changing mug, yeah. When you put hot liquid in there, it, uh, the adult ed logo comes right out on there. Yeah, I mean, that's really nice. She does those up right there.
Yeah.
So this looks like a mug, but when you put the hot liquid in there, the writing comes on the outside, yep. So those are little gifts from the adult ed.
Heather, we said thank you very much.
Thank you.
My apologies, I don't have any gifts for you guys, but I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
No!
The gift of Keela. So, uh, you have my report there. I just, I want to provide a little clarification on the dyslexia law. Because at some point in time, it could be implications for special education, but I think the goal of the law, it seeks to provide interventions at the tier-one level, at the basic level, so you do not rise to the level of special education. And as far as, um, dyslexia in special education, we don't have that as eligibility, but specific learning disability, you could, uh, that is an area where you might have an issue with reading or comprehension, letter, word identification. So sometimes that goes hand in hand right there, but, uh, uh, eligibility for dyslexia, we don't have that. But like I said, uh, the purpose of the law is to provide the interventions and put things in place, the screeners, so you can reach them before they get to the special education level. So to, if it becomes a special education issue, then accommodations and modifications would be, uh, provided. So there's that. Um, I gave you my report. Um, all of my students are included in, uh, the principals' reports, but that report is just some statistical data on how many students we have in our districts with I E Ps, five oh four plans, and, uh, their inclusion in the testing and whatnot. Um, so everybody reported out on the different things in the building, but, uh, I thought Ms. Richards was going to steal my thunder, but she didn't, so good. So last month, I talked to you guys about the peer-to-peer program where our general education students are paired up with the special education students and they seek to provide a sense of camaraderie, inclusion, and just belonging. So our program is functioning so well with the advisors, Ms., um, Kim Rizden and, uh, Ms. Jessica Jarvis, that, uh, they have been awarded a five hundred dollar grant to continue the great work and, uh, keep moving forward with that peer-to-peer program, so I am very happy about that.
That's great.
Yes. Any questions for me?
No.
Uh, so what do you?
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, no, no.
I can go now. Go ahead.
So I, I was gonna say, I went to the, um, G I S D, um, parent meeting and this was brought up because I was like, why do, is our, is our school affiliated with this? And they were like, "No." I said, "Hmm, I think it is." And I, 'cause I didn't see her name up there, I said, "I'm gonna get back and find out, but if so, can y'all fix this PowerPoint so our name can reflect?" But I know what you're talking about.
McMonroe is a part of it, yes.
Yeah.
Can you explain to me what's the difference between a five oh four and an I E P?
Right, so a five oh four plan is supposed to be a general education plan. It is for a student who might have a disability but does not have any academic impact. For instance, a student who might break their leg or has won this wheelchair brown or someone who has diabetes, but they don't have any academic struggles. To have an I E P, you definitely have to have an academic issue. There has to be some type of academic impact. You don't need that for five oh four services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's hundred and eight students. They're all in our school right now.
Yes, those are in our schools right now. The other, the ones that you see that are listed separately are at other programs. But those are our stu, in our total, in all of Westwood Heights.
Yeah, I, I do remember once upon a time, I was doing a split class. Is that process still going on or did it stop or made a mistake with the wrong person?
So, um, no, um, it, it's not Mott, but we do, are you talking about, uh, some services that we receive for the Flint water crisis? Yes, we are still a part of that. Those are thirty-one in services, yes. We are receiving support from the G I S D for that, yes.
Another question.
Mm-hmm.
The G I S D Transitional Center, is it one year now or is it two years?
Until they're twenty-six. It just depends on when they go. We have some students that go with senior year and then they, they're probably around eighteen or nineteen until they're twenty-six. We do have some students that go in their junior year and they go a little bit longer, but it isn't until age twenty-six. Ms. Roberts, you had a question for me?
I think you answered it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Yeah.
Alright, so my, uh, superintendent's report is, you guys know that, uh, I went to New York, to Brooklyn, to visit the uncommon schools and to visit, uh, Middle School or A M S two six seven. And, uh, these two schools are totally different. One is charter, one is public. And, um, we had the opportunity with my cohort to visit these, uh, schools who are, uh, starting to change of demographics, but who achieve at a high level. And so, um, the big takeaway, and I could talk to you guys in details, I could show you pictures and whatnot whenever we get ready. But, uh, at the end of the day, I spoke to all the administrators. I did a evaluation, or not evaluation, just observation, let me make it clear. Observation of different classrooms here in Westwood Heights. Um, and I, uh, whatever classes that any administrator, um, requested. And then I, uh, chose different teachers. And, uh, one of the things that I've learned is that, uh, visiting these particular schools in Brooklyn that achieve at a high level, they have what they call systems of excellence. And what I've learned is that we have pockets of excellence. And so, uh, I've talked to the administrators at length about that. And so, uh, we did have some great discussions individually. We'll meet as a group to go over those things. And so if you guys want me to speak to you individually or go into more depth, I will. But it was a good experience. Uh, thanks so much for allowing me to be a part of the Teach America Systems Leaders Program. Uh, and as you know, next week I'll be going to Memphis. They have a parent, uh, a parent inv-, um, parent involvement group, one of the best in the country. And, uh, so we're going to meet the lady that runs that program. And, uh, we'll be, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Prans, for you cannot go. We'll be meeting with her. Uh, she has a great program, a, um, a nonprofit. And so we'll be going and learning some, some different things there. And I'll come back, my next meeting, I'll report what, uh, what I've learned in Memphis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Key.
Yes, sir. Are we, uh, I, I picked up a family or a team or a family that we want to see?
Yes, sir.
Part of, they're, they're part of the same group. I know that we, we have a, that's a, a group of personnel in our district. Are we doing anything, if they won't come out of the house?
Yes, so I know you're talking about the whole ICE, the whole ICE situation. And so I've, uh, when we first had that unfortunate rumor that ICE were in our buildings, which was absolutely, positively not true. And, um, we, uh, as an administrative team, we got on top of that. I did meet with the parents, uh, that did have some concerns and, uh, expressed to them that, um, that was not true and that we have given instructions to our staff, our security staff in particular, that if anybody comes to our doors, they are to stop them and call me. We just, you just don't get to come in here, uh, and just do whatever. Regardless if you got a, uh, you have to have a particular warrant from a sign, a sign warrant from a judge and it has to be a s, a particular kind, right? So we, we are well aware of those situations and we made those families aware that, uh, we, we're not hauling any students out of our buildings. That's, that's not gonna happen. That's how we also, uh, we protect our kids.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one, uh, if we could beg up. You were telling us about the student representative that we have for our board. Who did you wind up getting?
Now that I spoke with, um, Mr. Casey, I think Mr. Finch's class is supposed to pick some kids, so get some kids to volunteer. So once again, it's very difficult to get our kids to be representatives. I did speak with the eleventh grade representative yesterday. And so I don't know if he is trying to be on the board or not, but I can really follow up and try to figure that out for us, uh, to try to make sure we get, uh, a representative. What our plan is, Ms. Ennis and I have been discussing that. We wanna make sure that we get, uh, a sophomore and a junior.
Right.
If we can get a senior, that'd be great, but we wanna make sure that we keep that thing moving forward. So it's just trying to get our kids interested in politics.
What about the Honor Society?
Yeah. Year that signed up, like a lot of kids, like the kids that signed up, like she said, eight signed up, but only three eligible or something to that effect, so we're working on it.
Okay.
She's middle school, yep. I haven't heard much about the high school, but she's a part of the whole process anyway, so she knows what's going on. Yes, Mr. Fikes?
Are we going to, I know we don't have the, what is it, a week test after the holidays?
Semester? The finals?
N W A.
N W A, yeah.
Are we going to, uh, are we, would, would we like to, uh, try to say it right? Engage the students into the test by, which we give them something in return for, putting their nose to the ground doing a test, because our students won't do anything per se without, nothing in return.
Incentives, that's what you're saying, yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, so I build leaders, build, develop those incentives. And then, of course, you know, I usually don't say no. And so we do what we can to make sure that we try to get kids motivated to do anything. Yeah, that was, that was under, that was when I was the principal, so, uh, yeah, 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 yeah. So that's, that's when I, that, and I was for that junior group doing the A C T. If they do well, they get free homecoming tickets and the golden tickets, yes, yes, yes. And we can go back to that, but, you know, I wanna meet with the building leaders and, and survey that student body and say, "What is it that, um, they would like to do well?" I mean, last year we gave out a P S five and it, and it boiled down to community service, right? And I, I tell you what, our kids were out there in that community helping the homeless, maybe they're doing a thing. And so, uh, so our kids, if we get the right, uh, incentives, they'll participate.
Anything else? Okay, consent agenda.
I moved at the Board of, oh, which one are we doing? Consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Approval of, oh, which one are we?
Approval of finance reports slash bill reports, treasury reports.
Yep, yep. So moved.
Forward.
Okay, this has been presented by Ms. Johnson, supported by Mr. Fikes. Any questions? Any discussion at all? Okay, all in a favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries. Approval of previous minute meetings. Secretaries' report.
I moved at the Board of Education, approve the secretary's report as presented.
Support.
Been moved by Ms. Johnson, supported by Mr. Walker. Any discussion? All in, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
We need to read the Treasury report. We didn't read it.
He did the Treasury's report, yeah.
Did you read it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did. Want me to do it again?
No. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's right. Uh, communications. Reminder, the annual holiday dinner at Frankenmuth is Thursday, this Thursday.
Tomorrow, is it?
Yes, tomorrow. See, I did come upon us and I hope to see you all there. I think it's, is it six o'clock or five o'clock? Ms. Ennis, do you know? Five thirty? Okay. I think it's important that we show up because, uh, Mr. Coleman is gonna get a recen- recon- They're gonna recognize him. No, it's a dinner. Okay. Public comments on action items only. Public comments on action items only. Public comments on action items only. Action items, personnel.
I moved at the Board of Education, approve the personnel report as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Ms. Johnson, supported by Ms. Coburn. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries.
I moved at the Board of Education, approve the district continuing participation in the collaborative school of choice program for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As in the year. Section one oh five, district available, available program, forty-five, twenty-six, fall semester. Available.
Where, where are you at, mister?
Number B.
No, we gotta do number A. You wanna go back and do number A?
Do letter A.
Approval of the district course catalog? No. So what is that? What is that? Mr. Kay, we need to do the motion.
Catalog is what we use for, you know, getting kids in class. You know, they gotta take so many of this and so many of that, it has to get approved, yeah.
Do I have your support?
Well, he gotta officially read the motion, though. It's right, right below there.
Go ahead and read the motion, mister.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fikes, supported by Mr. Walker. Discussion?
Yeah, so with the, the, if, the, the district course catalog, is that saying what the classes are going to be for the students for the upcoming, for the following school year, for the upcoming school year? And that's already done?
Black history specifically, then we'd have to get that approved by the board. You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
But, you know what I'm saying, so we have to add things or take things away. So, we didn't really add anything, it wa- it is what it is right now. Yeah.
That's what twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
No, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, this school year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries.
I moved at the Board of Education, approve the district continuing participation in the collaborative school of choice program for the forty-five, twenty-six school year, as in the year. Section one oh five, district available program, program, available program, forty-five, twenty-six, fall semester. WH, WWH. SOC.
School's of choice.
Section one oh five, forty-five, twenty-six spring semester. WWH, SOC, section one oh five C, forty-five, twenty-six spring semester.
Support. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Fikes, supported by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was not here last year, so I just need for this to be explained to me, what this is.
School of choice, so we have to-
I know what school's of choice is, but what do we, what is the, what is the vote for?
You have to approve school of choice.
Oh. Okay, simple as that.
Yep.
All right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries. The three-one AA resolution, de-opt, and subject to. This resolution is for the board to approve, to opt into three thirty-one AA funds. As written, the board will be allowed to opt out if the language, language is not changed. Um, right now, we need to go into closed session to vote. If needed. Is there any other discussion regarding that?
I, I was fully aware of what this thirty-one AA is, and I'm kinda surprised that-
I changed.
If you guys believe that you need to go into closed session because it is talking about safety and security, then if you need more understanding, we can go into closed session if needed. If not, my recommendation is that we opt in, right? That'll guarantee us, uh, those funds, and we can always opt out by December thirtieth if need be.
Of this year.
Of this year. So, wait, the date lies tomorrow.
Right, what they're doing is they're pending to change some of the language in that bill. So, we can opt in, and they're giving us the option to opt out if they do not change the language, so.
Okay, so we got one more meeting before the December thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
And if not, we can call a special meeting to decide what we wanna do.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
I moved at the Board of Education, approve the thirty, thirty-one AA opt-in resolution.
It's been moved by Ms. Johnson, supported by Mr. Fikes. Discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero opposes, that motion carries. Okay, at this time, public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items. Could you sign that sheet right up there for me, please? Thank you.
I really, uh, just came to invite you guys to some of the events. We have coming up with marching band.
Oh, okay.
So, um, Monday, we had the privilege of going over to Greater Heights and doing a performance for their students, they're gearing up to get ready to start doing NWVA testing. So, we were able to go over and kinda build that bridge between that school and our school, encourage them to do well on their test, while also, you know, just letting them know the programs that we offer here. We were able to take over our marching band, majora's and flags. And we also had the, the pleasure of taking over our middle school cheer team, so it was a great experience. Um, definitely had a good time, and our kids look forward to being able to go back and repeat that same thing. We did it previously at schools like London Charter as well. And we did, uh, a similar performance at London Charter last year, and I would say maybe have like four or five students that were at the performance that actually involved the school issue. Um, this Friday, we have been invited to perform at the Flint Festival of Lights. That'll be held downtown, um, in a flat lot area. So, we'll be marching out, um, the mayor will be with us, they have people from the Flint to the music, and it's like a whole festival where they'll light up the tree, there'll be different acts and different, uh, entertainment. They have free ice skating for the kids, they have free coffee, um, and hot cocoa that's being offered to the community as well as like Santa pictures and things like that, so our kids will be able to be out and celebrate the holidays with the community. We also have been invited to perform at the mayor's state of the city address. And that's next Tuesday at six PM at the Capitol Theater. Um, we'll be a part of the, the, uh, closing of the show. But it's, it's a blessing for us, we've been able to perform with the mayor maybe two or three times before now. So, the fact that we keep getting invited to go out and perform has been a blessing, and our kids have never performed in the Capitol Theater, we perform outside, so it'll be a pretty good situation for us.
Absolutely.
And that same day, um, the Flint Wind Ensemble, Symphony Wind Ensemble, they'll be having a, their annual concert at the Mayfair Church on Pearson Road. They have extended the grace to us where the concert is free, but they're accepting donations, and those donations will be, um, handed over to us and our program here at HAM. So, that's a blessing, we'll be taking some of our seniors over, 'cause they have the opportunity for students who will be in the Flint area to participate with their band at eighteen. So, the goal is we have a few students that are graduating this year that'll probably be going to U of M Flint, that's what we've been discussing in my, but they still wanna career, continue their music career. So, this is a great opportunity to kinda introduce them to some of the ensembles in the area. So, that's one of the blessings that we've had, as well as our annual, um, holiday concert is December nineteenth.
That's great.
Friday, December nineteenth here, that'll be here in Auditory in about five PM. And we just wanted to invite you out.
All right.
That's correct.
Those kids got gloves and hats.
That's, that's what we, we are working on, we made that announcement to them today, and then we're gonna go down to a couple of the stores and see if we can get some donations, just to make sure, 'cause it is gonna be cold, it's like twenty-four degrees that day.
And that Capitol Theater, is that what time?
That's at six PM.
Six PM, okay.
So, I'll make it a point to send out all the necessary communications so y'all have all the times and dates. But I just wanted to make sure we came out and invited you guys to what we had going on.
Thank you, Bruce the Golden.
Yes, it is. Any other public comments? Would you please sign the form? Yes, please, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, this may take a second. Couple things I wanna go over. My name is Casey Short, and if y'all don't know me, I was the varsity basketball coach here. Okay, so, before anything, I want to be clear, this is not about me, and this is not about basketball. This is about truth, fairness, and example of leadership we set, set for our students. And I need to say this upfront because it frames anything that follows. At this point, based on shifting explanations and new claims that were raised at any time during the last nine months, it generally, genuinely feels as though the administration is not looking for anything it can use to justify a decision that is not made through proper policy or procedure. If any of these new statements being made now, including speculation and what ifs, were actual concerns, they would have been addressed back in February, not suddenly in November, and not after the board learned the full timeline. I am not asking for special treatment, I am asking for consistency, transparency, fairness based on documented facts, not speculation. These are the facts over the nine, last nine months. I remain publicly listed as head coach, head varsity basketball coach on the MHSA schedule. My name was posted on the winter sports schedule inside the school. I completed all required coaching safety courses and certifications. I also scheduled the games for this season as well as the scrimmages. I attended football games on the sideline beside the AD, as well as the superintendent and other administrator. I communicated regularly, regularly with the AD about season preparation all season long, organized our participation in summer leagues and ev- and events. I was repeatedly asked updates to give the superintendent throughout the summer. I coached team practices on November twelfth and thirteenth with administrative knowledge, where me and the AD had a casual conversation before I entered the gym. At no point during this entire period did anyone say I was unsafe, disqualified, restricted, or removed. On November nineteenth, players and parents came to a board because they felt misled and confused. They weren't, they wasn't coming to cause problems. They were coming to look for answers because every attempt to go through the proper channel of command resulted in conflicting information from AD and the superintendent. Before, before they walked into that room, the players were warned, if you guys go in there and speak, be prepared for what happens next. Since when did students speaking up become something they could fear? Since when did parents expressing, expressing concern become a problem? These families weren't protesting, they were searching for clarity and fairness. They were doing what students were taught to do, communicate respectfully and advocate for themselves. Instead of, instead of being supported, they were intimidated. Immediately after they spoke, my name disappeared from the MHSA website, school schedule, making the time, the timing impossible to ignore. They were looking for solutions, and neither they nor I faced consequences for simply asking the district to follow its own policies. A meeting on November tw- twenty-fourth between administrators, administration, and players and parents. The main concern about that meeting, the AD wasn't present to answer the questions that other administrators didn't have the answer to. They were told, decisions were grounded off safety, district policy, educational ethics, based on, not based on emotional popularity. Policy. Under policy four one two one dot zero one, non-conviction, non-conviction criminal record policy, the district is required to provide written notice of administrative leave, a conduct of, conduct, conduct, a documented individualized review, complete a six-figure, six-factor analysis, and issue a written determination before restricting or removing any employee who has not been convicted. Only after the board became aware of these administrative failures on November nineteenth, did the, the administration suddenly invoke safety and policy concerns. This is selective enforcement, not compliance with the policy. So, since no analysis was ever gave to me, I did the analysis from my own facts. Factor one, nature of the offense. Unrelated to the school or minors, incident happened a year and a half before I ever became the coach. Factor two, time since the event. Nearly one year with no incidents. Factor three, rehabilitation entered a structured prosecutor-approved diversion program. Factor four, job duties, no conflict culture responsibilities. Factor five, employment record, positive reputation, no complaints trusted by players and families. Factor six, pattern of behavior, no history of misconduct. All six factors point toward allowing me to work. Zero factors justify my removal. For the, for the second one, safety. If safety were a concern, the district would not allow me full access to students, allow me to stand on the football sidelines besides the superintendent and athletic director all season. Permitting, permitting me to complete coaching duties or allowing me to coach practices on November twelfth and thirteenth. I will not, I will not remain publicly listed as head coach on school records. Also, the prosecutor's office would not have placed me in a diversion program designed specifically for people considered safe enough for continued employment with youth. Safety only became an issue after the board learned of night, board learned November nineteenth. That policy had not been followed, and that I have been functioning as a teacher for nine months. That shift is also selective enforcement. Policy and safety were ignored when it was convenient and suddenly applied only when administrative mistakes became visible. The timing, the inconvenience, and the district's own conduct showed that that was not a safety-based decision, but after the fact justification. I am also a travel basketball coach, traveling across the country with twenty-five kids at a time from multiple races and backgrounds, with parents trusting me with their children across the state lines. That kinda trust is earned, not assumed. The other issue was educational ethics. Educational ethics, ethics require consistency, honesty, transparency, and modeling the behavior we expect from students. None of those standards were met in this situation. Educational ethics do not allow leadership to change expectations depending on who's asking questions. They do not permit intimidating students to be warned them to be prepared for consequences if they speak to the board. They do not support removing the coach only after students and parents come forward. They do not support using job court against them when the same employment was the reason the court approved him for the program in the first place. True educational ethics require honesty, fairness, and accountability, not selective enforcement or retro, retroactive justification. The district's act, actions do not align with the ethical standards we expect our students to follow. The next one was emotion and popularity, decisions wasn't made off of that. Only popularity from this incident is my name and keeping kids here for athletic reasons. Administrator's decision appeared to be driven by, by emotion and popularity. From the peer, from the fear of public reaction, the administration, the administration would have allowed policy four one two one dot zero one from the beginning. It would not allow, not have waited nine months to mention safety. It would not have warned students to be prepared for consequences for speaking up. It would not be shifting explanations now. A decision that changes only after public pression, and public pressure is, is by definition influenced by emotion and reaction, not policy and not consistent. True leadership is steady, honest, and fair. That is not what the students deserve, and that is not what the situation has lacked. My status as at-will employee. I understand that coaching is an at-will position, but even at-will, at-will employee decisions still must be made in good faith, without retaliation, without misleading an employee, and consistent with district policy. At-will does not mean anything goes, and it does not allow selective enforcement. Or nine months of approval followed by sudden reversal, reversal without clear cause. At-will employees are still entitled to fair treatment, accurate communication, and consistent application of district's own policies. Conclusion, even with administration admitting they was wrong, the outcome for me still remained the same. Like, after admitting the mistakes, the timeline, the misleading the parents. Like after admitting the mistakes, the timeline, the misleading the parents, after that, we still ended up with the same result of my removal. My hope is that this can be resolved here fairly and consistent with district policy. But with the season already underway, time is not a real factor for the students and for me. For nine months, I remained publicly listed as head coach, which meant I was not in a position to pursue other coaching opportunities elsewhere. The district kept me in the row without ever telling me I would not be returning and only removed my name after the students came forward on November 19th. Because of that, I have, I have been unable to make decisions about my career and the program has been left without stability. If a clear resolution cannot be reached in the near future, I will have no choice but to explore all appropriate options available to me. I say that respectfully, only because these students and this process deserve transparency, stability, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, do the board have any comments that they'd like to? No comments? Okay, at this time, I would like to, uh, thank everyone for coming out again and expressing your opinions. And on this notion, I adjourn.